Call this committee of the common council, go ahead. Rule call, please.
Oliveran Kraus?
Here.
Horn?
Here.
Fire?
Here.
Peachey?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Lars?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll undertake public participation. Anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come and stand at the podium and state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Dan Griffith, 730 One Wood Court. I'm the president of Jefferson Library Board, and I just wanted to introduce our new library director tonight, Melissa Anderson. Hello.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, and well, congratulations on your promotion. We appreciate your work.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
There's any other public participation? Seeing none, move on to number three of presentation regarding the North Side Interceptor Sewer Project.
Dave, I think Bill will want you to just take that mic.
I'll get it.
It isn't working tonight, Tim. Audio isn't coming out of the wall.
Oh, okay. Never mind. Sorry.
Never mind, Jim. Just talk like you're hard of hearing.
Yeah, there you go. I am hard of hearing. So, really quickly, Mayor, what Todd is going to talk first about is an interceptor replacement project that there's an appropriation, a rather large one, in the 2020 fiscal year budget. This is a project that we would propose to fund with sewer revenue bonds, not a public offering, but a negotiated private sale. Dale, Dave from Ellers is going to handle that part of it. But the one thing that I wanted to suggest to you, the reason, this is an important project, Todd's going to tell you in just a minute, but he will cover this real quickly, but the one advantageous thing about doing this project now is that we look to time it with the payoff or pay down of two other bond issues. One, this year is the last payment, and then next year is the last payment on a second issue, and you know, you swap that debt service. So, you replace it with new debt service, so you have a lowered fiscal impact, and Dave, you'll cover that as part of yours. So, take your weight off.
All right, so on this first slide, you can see kind of an overview of the entire project area. In 2013, we actually did the first phase of this project, which is pictured in green. We went from Washington up to Milwaukee Street, replacing that section of sewer with 24-inch. Basically, this sewer interceptor brings everything down to the plant from the north side of the city, and actually parts of the east side of Main Street as well. So, basically, we've really, the last few years, reached the maximum capacity of the sizing of the sewer right now. We replaced the Wolcott Lift Station in 2011, 2012, and we sized that for the future. And right now, we cannot run it at full capacity. At about 60% capacity, we'll surcharge that sewer system. High flows on the sewer system existing actually kind of creates hydraulic damming on some of the side streets, so we do have to kind of keep an eye on that from time to time, especially on like Candy Street. Basically, everything at the North Interchange, any development out that way, will be coming down the sewer. So, as we have the hotel, starting gas station, any other new development out there, that's going to put this over capacity. So, the new interceptor is going to be connected at North Street. There's a section of pipe which is then sized correctly that comes down from Wolcott to North Street, the only lift station is on. Once we size this pipe in, there's going to be 24-inch all the way down, we'd be able to run the Wolcott Street Lift Station at 100%. There's also going to be a little section that we'll be able to add on to if we have to connect the North Interchange Lift Station, force main that into this interceptor as So, we're basically going to build this, the current interceptor is on the west side of the railroad tracks. We're going to construct this new one on the east side. The existing interceptor is going to be left in service the entire time while we're constructing this, and that's going to help actually minimize some construction costs and keep everything active without minimizing how much bypass bumping that we have to do. Sewer main connections from the, that come from the east will be disconnected from the existing interceptor and put onto the new interceptor, relieving some more stress off that load system. Connection will be made basically right next to the stable rock winery, future stable rock winery, Fort Burke Rock Bottom. That's where we ended, right outside of the new manhole we put in there in 2013. And then the existing interceptor, basically close to the Gorman project on the foremost building, be tied back in there. So, basically, that old interceptor system will just become conventional sewer main at that point. The project right now is estimated by $850,000. And as Tim alluded to before, we have two loans that are to be paid off, $2,000 Clean Water Fund loan, which we can pay them off this year, and then the second one, which in 2001, we had the last payment made in 2001. Capital free from these loans will make the debt paid out of the loan without impacting our budget too much. It's that time. I'll turn it over to Dave.
Could you just explain what the timetable is for the council?
Sure. So, basically, about 75% of plan is done. We should be finalizing the final plan set by the end of the week or so. We'll be putting it out to bid probably end of the month or beginning of March, and probably bring it to the council for final approval, second meeting in March.
Todd, are we going to need any easements to accommodate this?
There should be easements in place because the sewer actually, the visiting sewer actually jogs back and forth, and the only place we're crossing the railroad is where there's an existing cross.
Otherwise, it'll be in a pre-existing easement or a regular?
I should maybe know this after all these years, but you deal with this every day in that home, so what's the difference between a regular sewer main and an interceptor and a force main?
Force main is one that's being pumped through from like a pump station, so it's under pressure.
Not just gravity?
Not just gravity.
Got it.
Interceptor is basically one of your main sewers where all your branches, your branches come in, come into that main one. It's a larger one that just conveys the sewage right down to the treatment line.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
And this is the interceptor, or, I'm sorry?
Yes, this is the interceptor that we're relaying.
So, it wouldn't be force, it would be?
Gravity.
I heard it goes downhill.
What, you had mentioned the new hotel and everything. Would this accommodate that and meet their demands, or?
Yes. It's an existing sewer, it's about a 15-inch sewer at the largest point. This is going to be a 24, and while it sounds like we're not even quite doubling in size, you actually have to take the area of the pipe, and actually, we're probably tripling capacity going from 15 to 24.
Is there any need to go to anything larger, do you believe, or?
No.
What happens to the old sewer system is just decommissioned, or?
No, it's going to be remade at it, but it's just going to be, we're taking all, a lot of the load off that and putting it under this new one because it's surcharged right now. So, it's basically just going to act like a conventional gravity sewer, little empty into this one. So, it'll alleviate some of the problems that we have because of the high flows that are running now.
Any other questions?
Todd, what's the estimated window of construction?
We're basically bidding it out in the spring. We figure it's kind of up to the contractor. We'd like to have it done by, basically Thanksgiving, by the end of November, somewhere in that timeframe. Kind of depends, I guess we haven't really discussed a starting date, but we might have to, some of the things that are going on with the new stable rock, we might have to kind of coordinate them a little bit too, and some Larry does there. So, I have made Rob Lewis aware of this as well because of the fact, the project I'm going to talk about immediately after this as well is going to be in this area as well. So, we've got projects along that corridor, made Rob aware of the construction along there, and will certainly be cognizant of the brand opening that he's planning for June as well. So, Rob was named here tonight, but I told him that after this meeting, Todd and I would get together with him and discuss the timeline with him as well, so he was well aware of it.
Does that allow movement access to his north parking lot, right?
Correct.
As well as the alley for the duration?
That's correct. So, depending on what the schedule looks like, we may have to look at some temporary access off of Riverside Alley into that north parking lot through gravel, is what we're anticipating.
Can I play devil's advocate and say, what if we don't do it?
We will be in trouble once, as things continue to develop on the north side of the Jefferson North Interchange. We also have, you know, the county, former county shop site is looking to be developed, or actually even the foremost building, the foremost building, Gorman project. When that comes online, we add additional load with the residents that are going to be housed there, so.
When you say we're, we'd be in trouble, what do you mean by we're going to be in trouble?
We're going to be exceeding capacity, and we're going to be creating backups for people that are connected to that system.
So, that would backflow into the people's houses or streets, or what do you mean?
Yes, both could be possible.
Mostly your street.
And your house.
That's bad, Jim.
Any other questions? Dave?
So, I provided you with basically a financing plan that we worked up, and not with Todd and Tim, we could go over. If you turn to page two, it says, this is basically the project schedule. The city is going to provide $200,000 in cash that they have available, so the amount of the project that needs to be funded with revenue bonds is $650,000. The next schedule is our sources and uses, or our sizing schedule. You can see at the top, there's an amount of $650,000 that we said we're going to finance. Because of the debt service reserve requirements when you have revenue bonds, there's actually an additional amount that is required based on a calculation that we have to go through. That's going to be added on to the borrowing, so we're going to add $37,500 on to the existing $147,000 that the city has. We have estimated issuance costs. We'll be negotiating with Bankers Bank on this one. I'll get into that in a second. We did allow for bond council and disclosure council. It's up to the city whether, whether they would do the disclosure council. Do you do that normally, Tim? Disclosure?
That's above my pay grade. We have some quarrels doing that.
So, there's, okay. Oh, okay, so quarrels, we'll probably be doing that. Then you get down to the amount to be financed. There'll be a little bit of interest income earned during the construction period, and because we issue bonds in $5,000 increments, there's a little bit of rounding to get it to the $735,000 that we would negotiate with Bankers Bank. The next page, page four, is where we have the repayment schedule on the left side. The rates that are estimated there are the rates that we obtained from Bankers Bank. The reason that we're not recommending a competitive bid on this one is because the size is small, it's not as, as saleable in the competitive market. Usually, we'd like to see more like $100,000 blocks when you're going out in the market. What we also wanted to be cognitive of is having a fairly consistent payment, so you can see that that payment is around the $78,000 to $82,000 range. That keeps an even amount for the utility, and when I go into the next schedule, it shows the coverage, which is really important in this case. You'll see why that's important, to have kind of a level flow so that the rates and the amounts that we're collecting don't get overwhelmed by how much debt we have. Page five is the coverage schedule I was talking about. You're required to have about 1.25 times the number of amount available for debt service. So, we're doing kind of a flat computation here. We have operating revenues, we have the amount of operating and maintenance cost. We get down to the amount that we have available for debt service. So, we have $580,000 that's available for debt service. And over four columns from the right, if we just do the revenue bonds, which is usually what you compare to, you can see we're above that 1.25. We added on the existing general obligation debt that the sewer has a piece of just to make sure that we're good, good on that 1.25 as well. So, the entire total debt service of the sewer utility stays above that and has a little bit of a cushion, which you want to have, so that you're, you know, you have, just in case something happens, so you're, you're operating, you've got a little bit of cushion on that 1.25. So, with structuring the debt payments, which is in that future debt payment thing, you can see our payments are relatively flat. We're maintaining a fairly decent coverage, and also because that's going up in the future, if another project were to come up, we have some room to actually put that in, put another product in if it came up. So, you've got some flexibility, which is something we really want to have. On the next page, Todd actually had it up on the screens, which demonstrated that you're, you're on your last payment of 2020, and that your 2021 is the last payment on another debt. So, like Tim alluded to earlier, that's a time where you can see the total principal and interest drops off, and it's a good time to fit this debt in. So, the timing and the coverage all kind of works out really well. As far as timing, if you decide to go forward with doing an issue, if you decide to go ahead with this issue, we would come back, I believe March 17, Tim, does that sound right? To have you authorize the sale. That would also correspond with the bids coming in, so we could kind of tweak the numbers depending on what those look like. And then the sale would be on April 21st. We'll probably go back to Bankers and see, because the rates have been coming down, maybe we can get a little better rate as well. So, we'll come back with the final sale results that night, and about, let's see, on May 1st, you would have your money available to do the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
If I look at page six, so, the first column is 9/27/2000, amount is 1.42 million. We're finishing that up in 2020.
That's correct.
And then if I go to the next column is from 9/26/2001, we'll be finishing that up for $83,000 in 2021. And then, right now, from 7/25/2016, this is the remaining, we are currently?
Yeah, that would be your remaining revenue bond debt that you would have with the sewer utility.
So, basically, we're getting rid of the first two, and then putting on $70,000, is that?
A payment? The first payment would be? Yeah, so, in total, the payments would be somewhere around the $80,000 mark?
Oh, sure. And that's on page four, the total?
Correct.
Okay. And so, we're basically getting rid of two and just bringing that one back on.
Any other questions or comments?
I think it's, we're finishing up on the two other payments, and this is needed for the north side expansion and everything. It's a good time to go through it and get it done.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to a presentation on Riverside Extensions, Dave.
All right. So, I want to make the council aware of a project that we're getting ready to put out to bid. This is a project we talked about for several months, is the Riverwalk Extension from Milwaukee Street up to the Foremost Properties. Currently, the Foremost project under Gorman, they are progressing quickly with their project, and we anticipate that this summer sometime, they're going to complete that project in Riverwalk, leaving us a gap up to the north side of Rotary Park at Milwaukee Street. What we've got here, this is just an aerial photo of a proposed Riverwalk. Basically, what we've got is a Riverwalk that varies in width from eight to 12 feet, eight at the north end where it's going to tie into the Riverwalk at the Gorman property. The boardwalk itself currently is a wood structure, which I have showed you with rails on both sides. That's 12 feet wide, and transitioning down to a 10-foot approach at the south end of the project. The overall project length is approximately 370 feet. The location of it is west of the existing railroad tracks and west of the existing utility corridor, the overhead, the overhead utility lines that run along the west side of the railroad tracks. This structure is constructed on piers, and essentially, the level of the boardwalk will be about even with the existing railroad tracks. So, as far as the type of piers, that's actually going to be left up to the contractor. It may be wood, it may be steel, depending on the contractor that chooses to do it. It's going to be open for determination on the spec. As far as some specifics on the project itself, this kind of gives you a little bit of a better view that you can't see in the aerial on this. So, essentially, we've got 10-foot asphalt path on the south side, concrete approach, and then the bank itself will be ripraped. The width, originally, this project was designed approximately eight-foot width. After contacting DNR, we had looked at a couple of things as far as getting their input on the project, and one of the things that they liked about the project is being able to allow fishing from the boardwalk itself. So, what we did was widened it to a 12-foot approach. With the full railings, that also allows bicycle movement going in both directions. Right now, we've got an eight-foot pass on our boardwalk, which obviously, if you don't have railings, your handlebars can extend over the edges. When you've got a railing here, you've got to have adequate width to be able to do that. As I said, we are getting ready to bid this project. We're anticipating being ready to submit to DNR at the same time of bidding the project this Friday. We will have to get a Chapter 30, or Chapter 30 permit to fill along the bank to be able to do this. So, that'll be submitted concurrently with the bidding process. We've done this in other projects similar to the North Industrial Park last year. Essentially, what we'd be doing is bidding it, and when we award it, it'd be worth contingent on permitting approval. So, we've done this before. We anticipate that we're not going to have any issues with the permitting based on preliminary discussions and the review that DNR's had to this point. The letter that I distributed out to you, this is a draft letter. Attorney Rogers is just seeing this for the first time tonight. The one thing I want to make you aware of is because of the fact that this is within or adjacent to the railroad corridor, one of the things we had done is a survey by Southwest Surveying to determine exactly what the ownership of the corridor is. What was determined is that the entire corridor from the south side of the Foremost property down to Milwaukee Street is city right-of-way for First Street from the original plot of The reason we wanted to determine this is to make sure that there was not an underlying property owned by the railroad that we would have to request approval of the design from them. Chris and I have talked about this slightly, but again, he's just seeing the letter for the first time. Essentially, what we're doing is sending them a copy of the design and advising them that the city is proceeding with the project within its own right-of-way. We're acknowledging that because we are adjacent to the existing railroad corridor, that we will have to have a flag person while we are constructing. We've had to do this before on other projects. Right now, we're anticipating the project is going to extend for about 45 days up to, that's probably only about 15 days of actual construction. But while we are constructing and working in those areas, essentially within 25 feet of the railroad corridor, we will need to have a flag person from Union Pacific there. Todd will be doing the same thing when he has a sewer interceptor there as well. So, this letter, I'm looking for Chris to review this this week, advise of any changes, and then we will be distributing the 100% plan set to Union Pacific at the same time that we are submitting plans to DNR and putting out a bid on Friday. This project is approved as a TID-5 expense. Right now, we've got estimates that are, with engineering design, the last estimate we had was about $250,000. That is above the anticipated budget that we have. So, what we're going to do is looking at some potential alternates of possibly narrowing the overall Riverwalk down to 10 feet as an option, but right now, I'm hoping that as we bid this, that some of our other projects are also going to allow us flexibility. But this is certainly going to be a project that's going to have high impact down on the Riverwalk, and certainly complement what's going on at Foremost Stable Rock, and definitely be a benefit to the community.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions, Bill?
Thank you.
I know in the past with the flagmen, are we responsible for the cost of that, or would it be the railroad?
The city is, the city or any project that's adjacent to it is responsible for paying Union Pacific for the flag person. In the past, when we had done work as Public Works, when we developed actually a decent relationship with Union Pacific, they've given us some flexibility to be able to work with them. We'll see how that goes. This is a little bit more of a high priority project, and we don't necessarily know if we're going to have a positive response from Union Pacific. The one thing I can say is that the original design that we had looked, was putting it on the east side of the railroad tracks, requiring an accurate crossing by Foremost. We've eliminated that, so from a safety standpoint, this is certainly a better design because we don't have any, any crossings in the railroad in that location.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks for the update, Bill. Back to move on to a discussion about the community development block grant project goes on requirements.
Well, I can be quick with this one. This is a heads up. They had, two weeks from tonight, at the February 18 meeting. They had, two weeks from tonight, at the February 18th meeting, we've noticed a public hearing. And the purpose of that public hearing is to discuss, and it all ties to this community development block grant revolving loan fund close out, which we're intending to do because we have to do it. And that's the project that when we pay the funds to the state, we hope to get them back in the form of a block grant to reconstruct Plymouth Street in 2021. So, we want to start that formal process, but before we do, we have to have a public hearing. So, the community will be invited to come in, learn about the project, basically the reconstruction of Plymouth Street from Main Street to Wisconsin Drive. In addition, there's other block grant requirements, federal requirements of things you have to discuss. My sense is, is not many people, if any, will show up. But it is noticed in the paper for 5:00 on February 18th, so I got to ask you to come down a little early that date.
Will there be any questions in the answer period or just a...
Yep, yep. Yep, myself and Ron Van Stradon will probably do most of the talking. We've had these before, when we've had these grants, I don't know that we've ever had anyone come, but they might.
Good. Any other questions, Tim? Hearing none. Move on to have two appointments for your confirmation and consideration for election workers. I'd like to submit the names of Dick Emrick and Steve Adams. I would entertain a motion for approval. So moved?
Second.
Mr. Randall, Mr. Miller, hearing none. Do this on a wish. If all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. To unanimous, thank you. Proposed ordinance number 2-20, an ordinance to amend the Electoral Code, Section 120-2 of the City of Jefferson Municipal Code. Alderman Horn, please.
Thanks, Alderman Mayor.
Sorry, Alderman Lars. Going off the line, Steve.
City of Jefferson ordinance number 2-20, an ordinance to amend the Electoral Code, Section 120-2 of the City of Jefferson Municipal Code. Statute 120-2, Electoral Code, and Statute 120-3 permits required. And due to the length, and we have read the complete text, this ordinance is a complete copy of, is on file at the city clerk and is available for public inspection.
It's been moved to second. Second? Signified by Mr. Randall. Any discussion?
Yes, in our last meeting, we inserted in paragraph E that reports of violations were to be made by all police officers and the new phraseology would be inserted there, or other city officials. The draft I have tonight doesn't have the new phraseology. And I think that should be put in.
Okay, do I have a, do I hear a motion for that, to that effect?
In which section was it?
E. Under report of violations.
What is the definition of a city official?
Someone in, employee of the City of Jefferson.
Was that an omission or was that an intentional?
I read it now as report of violations, all police officers shall report at once to the inspectors any building, electrical, or plumbing work which is being carried out on without a permit as required by this section. And Attorney, what do you...
If I recall, the addition of the city officials added in the first reading and it's just not showing up in the secondary, correct?
Right.
So, instead of police officer, we're just changing it to city officials?
No, police officers or other city officials.
I would like to make the amendment to include city officials to Section E of the resolution. I second that about in...
It's been motioned to second. Any discussion? To include the verbiage, other city police officers or other city officials.
Correct.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name, go up your post.
Alderman Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
To unanimous for the amendment, any other discussion on the ordinance, proposed ordinance as amended? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name, go up your post.
Alderman Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire? Aye.
To unanimous, thank you. Resolution number 72, the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 72. Be resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for February 4th, 2020 is hereby adopted. A, vouchers payable for December 2019 in the amount of $14,996.77 in January 2020 in the amounts of $377,387.59. Payroll summary for January 31st, 2020 in the amount of $173,396.15. B, we approve council minutes from January 21st, 2020 of the common council. C, licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. We have one operator's license for Sarah Holbert at Herbie's. And special class B licenses, we have none tonight. I would so move.
Any moves, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye as your name is called.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandal?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandal?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandal?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
To unanimous, thank you. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 per C, the Wisconsin State Statutes to Consider Employment of a Full-Time Police Officer and a Part-Time Police Department Administrative Assistant.
I'd so move.
Moved by Alderman Peachey, second by Alderman Kraus.
Thank you. We are reconvened to open session. This time, we'll consider Resolution Number 74, a resolution authorizing the hire of a full-time patrol officer.
Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. Whereas Police Chief Pledgey has taken steps to fill a vacant position based upon a recent resignation in the police department for a full-time patrol officer. Whereas Police Chief Pledgey has recommended that part-time officer Jameson Hawke be hired by the City of Jefferson to fill the vacant full-time officer position pursuant to the City of Jefferson Fire and Police Commission, 72919, review and approval of said request. And whereas the personnel committee, having reviewed the qualifications of part-time Jameson Hawke and a recommendation of Chief Pledgey, has also recommended the promotion of part-time officer Jameson Hawke from part-time officer status to full-time officer status to the common council. And whereas the chief of police has full-time funds allocated in his 2020 approved operating budget and that his part-time patrol officer is to replace a current vacancy in the full-time patrol officer staff. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the chief of police is authorized to promote part-time officer Jameson Hawke effective Wednesday, February 7, 2020, as a full-time patrol officer of the City of Jefferson Police Department. The initial rate of pay shall be the entry-level step as outlined in the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Jefferson Professional Police Officers Association. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brannan. Any discussion?
It was unanimous, that personnel.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, go up your post.
Alderman Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandal?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandal?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
To unanimous, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Peachey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lars on a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.